The meeting will come to order, please rise for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Here.
Councilmember Page?
Here.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Here.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Here.
Councilmember Dolan?
Here.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Here.
Chair, we have a forum.
Move approval of the general meeting of December 13, 2016. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, as I have it, motion carries. General is approved. We have no bid opening, move to communications.
Mr. Chair, there are no tax compromises this evening, so we'll move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number 1, 6th District.
Receive file and the matter be referred back to the planning committee for consideration of additional information relating to the requested change of rezoning or of zoning.
So ordered.
Moving on to road and bridge matters, Mr. Chair, item number 1, all districts.
Receive file, and that will be the order.
Moving on to other communications, Mr. Chair, item number 1, 4th District.
Receive file and refer to the county council as a committee of the whole, and that will be the order.
Item number 2.
Receive file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 3, 2nd District.
Receive file and hold on the order business. So ordered.
Item number 4, 3rd District.
Receive file and a copy of this report be sent to the city of Twin Oaks.
So ordered. Need to hold something?
They sent that to us.
Pardon?
Mr. Chair, let's back up to item number 3. We do have a request from the applicant to urgently process their license.
Oh, okay.
And that's okay with me.
So.
So I move approval of the license. Item number 3.
There's been a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, as I have it, motion carries. And then...
Mr. Chair, may I amend my former motion? I'd like to also send a copy of the report to the Department of Planning, the Department of Revenue, and the Board of Election Commissioners.
So ordered.
Thank you.
Not gonna make it easy on me, are ya, this last one, huh? Huh, did he plan all this, huh? Yeah.
Yeah, it's only just begun, too.
We may be here till 6:00, okay?
Major order.
All right.
Item number 5, 7th District.
Receive file and refer to the Department of Transportation and Public Works for review and recommendation.
So ordered.
Item number 6.
Receive file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through item number 8, and that will be the order.
Item number 9, 2nd District.
Receive file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. So ordered.
Item number 10, 5th, 6th, and 7th District.
Same motion. So ordered.
Item number 11, 6th District.
Receive file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 12, 1st District.
Same motion.
So ordered.
Item number 13, 1st District.
Receive file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation and a copy of this report be sent to the city of University City.
So ordered.
Item number 14, 1st District.
Receive file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation and a copy of this report be sent to the city of Pine Lawn.
So ordered.
Item number 15, 1st District.
Receive file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation and a copy of this report be sent to the city of Wausau.
So ordered.
Item number 16, all districts.
Receive file, and that will be the order. Add on, please.
Yes, sir. Item number 1, 7th District.
Receive file and the agreement be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, as I have it, motion carries.
Item number 2, 3rd District.
Receive file and the agreement be approved as requested.
So ordered. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, as I have it, motion carries.
Item number 3.
Receive file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
And item number 4, 4th District.
Same motion, and that will be the order. County Executive, all right. No special committees, move to public forum.
Two speakers this evening, Mr. Chair, this afternoon.
Keep your comments to three minutes, please state your name and address.
First speaker this afternoon is Dudley McCarter.
Good afternoon, Mr. County Executive, who has stepped out, and honorable members of the St. Louis County Council. My name is Dudley McCarter, I'm an attorney licensed in the state of Missouri, practiced law here in St. Louis County for forty-plus years. I'm here on behalf of my client, Gershenson Construction Company, which is a well-known contractor here in St. Louis County and which has done a lot of good public work for St. Louis County. And I'm here really out of a sense of bewilderment. My client bid the project known as the 2015 CRS overlay, which involved work on South Broadway at Jefferson Barracks Park. The bid was submitted in December of last year, it was notified that it was the low bidder, it was issued a contract which it signed and returned. This body approved that project by ordinance 94-2016 in May of 2016. My client attended a pre-construction conference, it mobilized, it got ready to do the work, and was ready to get started as soon as it received the notice to proceed, which it expected for this type of work to be in June or early summer. It never received the signed contract, it has contacted the Department of Public Works dozens of times to let the county know it is ready to do that work. Out of frustration, it sent a letter to the county on October 27th inquiring about when the contract would be approved and it would be allowed to proceed with the work, there was no response. I then sent a letter on its behalf to the St. Louis County Executive on November 1st inquiring about the status of the contract and wondering when my client would be allowed to do the work. Of course, the optimal time for this work has now passed. So the mobilization and the efforts my client made to get ready to do this work were for naught, it's expended money to get ready expecting it to be done, attended, as I said, the pre-construction conference with every expectation of starting immediately and was advised that there was no signed contract. So its efforts to find out what the status of this is have been not responded to, my efforts have not been responded to. My client still wants to do this work, would like to do it, is ready to do it whenever the weather permits, and is anxious to have the signed contract back and be allowed to do the work. If it is going to be awarded the contract, which is my client's hope, I'd like to have that accomplished. If it is not going to be awarded the contract as a low bidder, we'd like to know why, and we'd like the contract returned so that the bid bond my client paid for and submitted to the St. Louis County can be canceled and it can avoid paying further premiums on a bid bond that's required for all construction projects. So I'm here imploring this body to do whatever it can to give me some direction, hopefully let my client proceed with this work as it has done for many, many years in St. Louis County with the county's best interests in mind, and I'm here frankly on behalf of my client out of a sense of frustration not knowing where else to go, so...
Where was the road project?
It's by Jefferson Barracks, and with me is Scott Harris of Gershenson Construction Company who put the bid together. South Broadway at the entrance to Jefferson Barracks Park and Hill de Chime Road.
Okay.
It was bid in December of 2015, obviously the summer opportunity to do this work has long passed. So my client is hopeful that it can be awarded the contract, weather won't permit this work to be done right away, but as soon as the weather permits, it would like to do this work and get this job done.
Okay. Thank you, Dudley.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker is Tom Sullivan.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few things to mention. Thanks for calling on me last week, this week, last week you seemed to overlook me when I signed up.
What'd you like in additional three minutes?
No, I think I got about twenty or thirty coming. Mr. Chairman, a few things to mention. Public hearing for the Jamestown Mall redevelopment plan is set for Tuesday, January 3rd at 4:00 PM. This is not a good time for public participation, maybe it can be rescheduled to a better time, maybe even a Saturday morning in North County. Hopefully the new council will set public hearings at times more convenient for the public. I finally received information on the audit of the county health department for HIPAA compliance. The information was kept covered up for nearly a month. The contract raises many questions about how the county awards professional contracts. This is one more thing the new council needs to look at. Also received more information on the top-to-bottom forensic audit that was supposed to be done in the first 100 days of Steve Stanger was in office. What was to cost $140,000 has now gone over $200,000, it could go up even more, and no one knows when it will be completed. The additional costs were not approved by the council. Also, I'm still trying to get emails from the county executive's office related to the county's sales tax hike. Not surprisingly, there are more attempts to keep county business covered up. Honest people don't have the need to keep things under wraps. State of Missouri will have a new Attorney General next month, and I think he will give more attention to sunshine law violations. Since the county executive is no doubt one of the worst violators in the state, that means he should be getting some more attention. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Tom, have a Merry Christmas.
You too.
No more speakers, Mr. Chair.
Introduction to bills.
Bill number 327, introduced by Councilmember Page and ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a contribution of $800,000 from the Metropolitan Park Recreation District, appropriating same for supportive trails and signage related to the Free For Park Soccer Complex project and authorizing execution of necessary documents. Bill number 328, introduced by Councilmembers Erby, Page, Wassinger, O'Meara, Dolan, O'Leary, and Harder, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with HDR Engineering Incorporated for engineering services related to free roadway improvement projects AR-1643, 1644, and 1646. Bill number 329, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with LF Club Construction Incorporated for improvements to Lilac Avenue AR-1449. Bill number 330, introduced by Councilmember Page and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Horner and Triffin Incorporated for engineering services in connection with the Westport Plaza Drive Intersection Improvement Project AR-1673 and the Westport Plaza Drive Marine Avenue Reservicing Project AR-1548. Bill number 331, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara and ordinance authorizing the chief of projects to bid four Panasonic CF31 in-car computers to the Selikum Missouri Police Department. Bill number 332, introduced by Councilmember Erby and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract for maintenance of space in the Met Center Building by the Automotive Technology Department of St. Louis Community College. Bill number 333, introduced by Councilmember Page, ordinance remending Title 12 St. Louis County on the since 1974 amended traffic code by enacting and adding 1 provision to Schedule 2. Mr. Chair, that is all the bills.
Perfection of bills.
Bill number 322, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
Take it up, move for perfection of bill number 322.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, as I have it, motion carries. Bill number 322 is perfected.
Bill number 323, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I can take it up, move for perfection, bill number 323.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, as I have it, motion carries. Bill number 323 is perfected.
Bill number 324, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
Take it up, move for perfection of bill number 324.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, as I have it, motion carries. Bill number 324 is perfected.
Bill number 325, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I can take it up, move for perfection, bill number 325.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, as I have it, motion carries. Bill number 325 is perfected.
Bill number 326, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I can take it up, move for perfection of bill number 326.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, as I have it, motion carries. Bill number 326 is perfected. Final passage of bills.
Bill number 116, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Please hold, bill 116.
So ordered.
Bill number 307, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I can take it up, move for passage of bill number 307.
Mr. Chairman, this is to be, this is a committee of the whole.
Oh, that's right. Hold on to order of business, that will be the order.
Bill number 309, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I can take it up, move for final passage, bill number 309.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 309, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 309 is finally passed.
Bill number, bill number 310, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move final passage of bill number 310.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 310, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 310 is finally passed.
Bill number 311, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I can take it up, move for final passage, bill number 311.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 311, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 311 is finally passed.
Mr. Chair, can I ask who made the second on that motion? Thank you.
Any doubts, Mr. O'Leary always seconds something.
Bill number 312, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I can take it up, move for final passage, bill number 312.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 312, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 312 is finally passed.
Bill number 313, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I can take it up, move for final passage, bill number 313.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 313, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 313 is finally passed.
Bill number 314, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger.
I move for final passage of bill number 314.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 314, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 314 is finally passed.
Bill number 315, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Move for final passage of bill number 315.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 315, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 315 is finally passed.
Bill number 316, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger.
I move for final passage of bill number 316.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 316, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 316 is finally passed.
Bill number 317, introduced by Councilmembers Wassinger and O'Leary.
I move for final passage of bill number 317.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 317, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 317 is finally passed.
Bill number 318, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary.
I move for final passage of bill number 318.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 318, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 318 is finally passed.
Bill number 319, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of bill number 319.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
No.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
No.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 319, there are five ayes and two noes.
Bill number 319 is finally passed.
Bill number 320, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of bill number 320.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
No.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
No.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 320, there are five ayes and two noes.
Bill number 320 is finally passed.
Bill number 321, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I can take it up, move for final passage, bill number 321.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 320, excuse me, 321, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 321 is finally passed. I think that was the lights for the soccer complex, too. Oh, then no. Just kidding. All right, move on to resolutions.
Mr. Chair, we have four resolutions this afternoon. Resolution number one, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
Move for adoption of resolution number one, second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on resolution number one, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number one is adopted.
Resolution number two, introduced by Councilmembers Dolan, Erby, Page, Wassinger, O'Meara, and Harder. May I read the resolution?
Please.
Resolution, whereas a young man named Kevin grew up sharing a small one-bedroom house in Akron with his four brothers and two sisters where he developed an unusually strong work ethic and a devotion to family, and whereas this enterprising young man worked at House Bakery for nine years before purchasing a St. Louis post-dispatch delivery route which required him to rise at 3:00 AM every morning, and whereas Kevin worked hard and saved his money from his next job at Delaney's Restaurant which ultimately allowed him to achieve his dream of purchasing his namesake restaurant, O'Leary's, with his close friends, John Goodman and Carl Kloster, which he nurtured and grew for seventeen years, and whereas most importantly during this time Kevin married his ninth grade sweetheart Jan, with whom over the course of over forty years of marriage he lovingly raised two daughters, Bridgette and Megan, and welcomed four beautiful grandchildren, and whereas Kevin strived to serve his South County community as evidenced by his service to the city of Sunset Hills, the board of directors of the South County YMCA, and his daughter's Schools Point Elementary and Rogers Elementary, and whereas we now know Kevin as sixth district St. Louis County Councilman Kevin O'Leary, having been elected to that position to fill the unexpired term of office which will end on December 31, 2016, and whereas the appropriate people of St. Louis County are charged to appreciate their public servants, now therefore be resolved by the county council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows, section 1, the county council expresses their deepest gratitude and appreciation to St. Louis County Councilman Kevin O'Leary who stepped up on short notice to serve the people of St. Louis County and who has done so admirably and honorably.
Move for adoption of resolution number...
Two.
Second.
Yes, two.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
I wish you the best of luck, Kevin, I've enjoyed working with you, and much success to you in the future.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye, thank you, Kevin.
You're welcome.
Councilmember O'Leary?
No.
He got a vote for himself.
Councilmember Harder?
Always the jokester. Aye.
And, Mr. Chair, on resolution number two, there are seven ayes.
Oh, we got it.
Council Chair, I just have a plaque to present to Councilmember O'Leary for your service from your colleagues on the council. Very much enjoyed working with you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I ask that we go back to resolution number one so that the record will reflect that all the council members co-sponsored your resolution for Mr. King?
Sure.
Thank you. Resolution number three, introduced by councilmembers Dolan, Erby, Page, Wassinger, O'Leary, and Harder, may I read the resolution?
Please read it.
Resolution, whereas Michael O'Meara is a true son of North St. Louis County, born and raised in Florissant and educated at McCorr North High School and Florissant Valley Community College, and whereas it was in North County that Mike and his six siblings learned from their parents Jim and Pat to value hard work, service to the community, and above all devotion to family, and whereas those values compelled Mike to further his education and obtain his bachelor's degree from St. Louis University, to rise to leadership positions in the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Local 562 and the United Association of Plumbers, Pipe Fitters, and Sprinkler Fitters, to pursue excellence as a soccer player resulting in his selection in 1979 as an All-American in students' professional soccer teams, the Kansas City Comets and the St. Louis Steamers, and to serve as a board member for St. Patrick's Center, the Missouri State Council on Vocational Education, and the St. Louis County Police Athletic League, and whereas Mike married Carol and together they followed in Jim and Pat's footsteps and lovingly raised their children, their children, James and Maddie in Florissant, having also recently welcomed with joy their first grandchild, a boy named Truman Michael, and whereas Mike further followed in the footsteps of his father Jim and was elected to the position of St. Louis County Councilman for the 4th Council District in 2000, a position he has held since then, also having served as Chair of the County Council in 2007, 2011, and 2016, where it is appropriate that the people of St. Louis County pause to appreciate their public service, now therefore be it resolved by the county council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows, section 1, the county council expresses their deepest gratitude and appreciation to St. Louis County Councilman Mike O'Meara for representing the people of North County with passion and commitment to excellent service.
Move for adoption of resolution...
Three.
Three. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
I wish you the best of luck, too, Mike, I've enjoyed working with you over these last ten years, even though we don't always agree, I can respect, reasonable minds can differ, and I wish you much success, aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
I'd like to have all seven votes for me, but I have to abstain on my own vote.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye, thank you.
Thank yous.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Kev.
And Councilmember Harder?
I guess, okay.
Counsel, uh, Chair O'Meara, on resolution number three, there are six ayes and one extension.
Resolution number three is adopted.
Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the council, we have a plaque and a gavel to recognize your service.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, enjoyed working with you.
Thank you, council members.
And resolution number four, introduced by councilmembers Dolan, Erby, Page, Wassinger, O'Meara, O'Leary, and Harder, may I read the resolution?
Please read.
Resolution, whereas Jo Olafen was born in Brighton, Tennessee, but at the age of twelve relocated with her family to the St. Louis area, and whereas Tennessee's loss was St. Louis County's gain, as Jo became firmly entrenched in North St. Louis County, marrying Jo Roach with whom she lovingly raised two sons, Jason and William, and whereas after her husband's untimely passing, Jo demonstrated great strength as she raised her two boys into fine young men, and whereas Jo found love a second time and since 1998 has shared her life with her husband, Rich Cressler, and whereas Jo caught the bug early and became a fixture in North St. Louis County politics, and whereas during her professional career, Jo has been active in the Spanish Lake Democratic Club, attended the 1972 Democratic National Convention, worked for Congressman William Lacy Phil Clay Senior, Congressman Lacy Clay, and Missouri State Representative Tim Green, and whereas in 1991, Jo accepted the position of Legislative Assistant to St. Louis County 4th District Councilman Jim O'Meara and continued in that position for Councilman Mike O'Meara who was elected in 2000, and whereas Jo Roach will retire from her position with the St. Louis County Council on December 31, 2016 and move on to the next phase of her life, allowing her to spend more time with her husband, her sons, her daughter-in-law, and her beloved grandchildren, Eamon, Shane, and Jackson, where it is appropriate that the people of St. Louis County pause to appreciate their public service. Now therefore be it resolved by the county council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows, section 1, the county council expresses their deepest gratitude and appreciation to Jo Roach for her many years of dedicated and passionate service to the St. Louis County Council and the people of St. Louis County, especially the residents of the 4th Council District.
Move for adoption of resolution number four.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Good luck, Jo.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
As one of my friends said, and I said it to some of the staff last week, if I need something done, this is directly to me, if I need something done, I'll call my Councilman Jo Roach, so, she's done a great job, so, thanks, Jo. Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Thank you, Jo, aye, you have to come up here to get it, though.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Good luck, Jo. Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Good luck, Joe. Aye.
Mr. Chair, on resolution number four, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number four is adopted.
And, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to let you know, we will have these resolutions framed and delivered to all the recipients.
Thank you.
Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Chair, item number one, 4th District.
I am misplaced on that stuff. Hold on the order of business, that will be the order.
And moving on to new business, Mr. Chair, we have 12 prepared orders to be addressed.
Adoption of orders one through seven.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.